Okay, then I ended that one. Why it is not working? Okay, it is not playing okay. So here it is our wait for. The how? Change the chat do. This is I don't know if it is going in the feed or not. I'll check. Uh-huh, I don't know. Uh, if you can hear me say hello in the chat so I know. You can see. So I'll wait for few people to join in and see if it works. And. I'm not sure what's happening, why it is. Not loading up in my feed. Because usually I can see it happening live but this time. Okay, is it? Correct, okay. Wait, give me a second. And yeah, we are here on to love. Is here. So let me put that chat window here. I don't know if it's working, can you see the? Unreal, um, the feed is not updating in mind for some reason. I don't know why. I'll try closing things down. For all the things we don't need. Okay. Let's see if uh, I think if it don't work. And. We will end for today then. Because I'm not able to see the feed in mind. And I can see people are commenting but if can you hear me then? If you can hear me then please say in the chat you can. Because on YouTube it is not updating, I can see it here, it's going fine. Maybe just window update I need to. Hmm, okay. Let me check on my phone if I can see. It's weird, I'm not able to. And. Yes there. Yeah, that's good. Okay, well, I can see it on my phone, so it is working. Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, let's go. Okay, so here uh, what I did last time unfortunately the feed was not going through, I don't know if this gonna be saved or not. It's acting weird for some reason. I had the textures to the trees leaves basically. Uh, see this is the chestnut, the bark we did not. I was looking at the texture for the bark we had, we can do it, I had only downloaded. So we have. The chestnut and we already have uh. Birch also. Let's show you, this is here and we have S pen. And S pen leaves we already have. Yeah, so did I, I think I. Already cleaned up. Already cleaned up it. So I can just double check. Was there, yes. Just give me a second. I will just open up the files for. I will do it in this one only. And. See if it just keep going, I will just check in mine. Okay, so I will know it is going on. So uh, this is the one I would save as uh. Another file. We had mesh by own. Trees. Yeah, S pen is there. So most possibility we have already. Yeah, cleaned up and exported. All we need to do is make the material, at least I will make the leaf one. So that's what we were doing, we were mainly cleaning up and these are foliage type. So we don't worry too much about it. Go to chestnut and we're gonna take uh, this is bark. This is leaf and I'm gonna copy to the S pen. Let me just. Yeah, so this is basically gonna be the. Leaf I'm gonna make it. Here. And then comes here and then. We have. This. Normal and I said I did not make but let's leave it for now because it doesn't matter much. Uh, we have it here. And now we can uh, try adding. Just not have too many of which is good. And we have this S pen leaf so I can just. Assign. It is. See it from up close if it is. Okay or not we can. Seems like, okay. Yeah, leaves are there. And we can minimize. We have already in the foliage, yeah, we have it. So this is birch. Which we don't need actually because we changed it to. Is it that it's with the name with the person only? So I can turn it on and paint, I can say single. So what gonna happen, we can place them single. Cycle through selection, so it's gonna place one by one, we can just simply. Oh, it's bigger than the. Chestnut, this. That's a lot. It's supposed to be, maybe it should be. The chestnut also can get really huge compared to. This one. And the only thing is like we need bark but we already downloaded so that we can place in there. For now I would just have it as this. And. So this is good, we have it, the bark is nothing biggy, we can just import texture. And even last time I have made these two. Volumes. Right, so I can you know. Paint these manually, these areas, so that's what I kept here as well. And then. Oh, oh, we, the, what we discussed is. Last time we had the height map which are baked from. There but we in, I again took it to Gaia but we were not able to export, let me try opening Gaia again. If it works, it's good, otherwise world machine is our. Friend. Yeah. And. Oh yeah, it did open actually, so which is good. Let me see if we can export now, I'll show you I had. And I will just bring it here. So you see we have uh. Our. Where do you go? Oh, come on. This. Uh, mesh I brought in. Basically the mesh from our. Unreal, this mesh I exported. Static mesh basically. And I brought it in to Gaia as a static mesh, then I did erosion, another erosion. And then I tried doing some stuff which. Did not work unfortunately. Right, but the erosion was much more crisp and clear, but what was doing here is basically. If I can export RGB flow map and other thing. So it was saying locked, but I don't know, sure about. What is that, but on mainly whatever is basically interested in these height map and. Um, you know, mesh. Which is, you know, how many polygons which has a look, okay, this is fine, five pro is fine. And I can basically build and it's show measure and other thing. So when I click build, let's say open folder, start the build. But. It does the thing. But we don't know, did not get the mesh last time, so let's see if we get this time. So here is our, let's say is seventeen MP. Maybe, so this one is done, I will make new. It's because it was giving plain basically. When it is. Okay. It's not giving the mesh. Three mesh, it's just giving this rocky plain. Somehow, I don't know what's happening. Why it's happening, whatever I'm seeing is here and it's correct. And if we have to export, we have to convert it to mesh or something, if we have to. I don't know, uh, because at least it should export. The image but it is not doing that as well. I will show you, yes, it's the same thing. So it did not do it, so what I did, I yesterday tried exporting it uh. So you can take a file here. Yeah, and file you can import. And I also found out that this is based on uh. Or the node is not a descendant of a log node, which one is locked? And log preview is not there. Let me. Yeah, now it is fine. Yeah, so this was. Basically too much and then we can convert it. Using with if I adjust and clamp. Which can, we can say, okay. Okay, those, don't be super crazy. And then we can feed this into erosion and then it go nuts. Same thing, but you know. Or work around, I used X normal to bake the height map and simply in Blender. I show you the file, I still have it here. I don't know if it was streamed or the stream was having some error, errors and that. So this is like basic plane in the ground and then the same mesh which I exported from Unreal. So it's there, so we are just making it bit more crisp. See, this is uh, how it is like blobby, then you do the erosion. It become ice and make it rocky. So more chisel, I did another to make it more flat and you know. To blend it with more ground and I did simple erosion and that's it. And then I came here and I said mark for export. Mark for export and. Mark for export and now we can try again, now once again, it's simple, select. And you can say build. And we start build. In open. You remember last time it was not even doing it. And we have, it's still fifteen MB for something, I can check it here. So height maybe there, the possibly the mesh could also be there. So we might be in luck if this workout. Maybe I will import it in the same, so we can keep it. Right, so because it will be. Hmm. Where is it? It's too small. Too small. Scale one zero zero. Where is it? Scale one zero. We have to scale it thousand then. Or maybe it's centimeter and meter. It seems good now. Rotation scale. And there is anything. This material is there, so select and link the same material. We have the same material and if you feel this. Geometry is less, we can make more, but let's test this out how it is now. And then we can, you know. This is the one we uh, exported. Hmm. Mount, I'll just do it mount. And let's go. Outliner. Reimport. I think we it gonna reimport from the same mesh we exported, so we have to. Uh, select it manually. Yeah. See, to see how it is, first, let's go to camera. And. Take. Take high resolution screenshot of this. So we can see the difference. What is happening? Yeah, yeah, so we change this to mount. And we say the input mesh. And voila. Seems more pokey. Yeah, and more high, so that's we need to fix. More high than the other one, so scales at point six or seven. It, it is fine, like it's almost touching. High points. Look. Okay, so now here we go. Reimport mesh again. Yeah, so yeah, it's in the scene now. Well, I'll just do another screenshot. To see how it looks. Before I jump fly off, see. Now we have. Much better blend. And we can, you know, play with it still, if I press one. And if we want to move it down there, then it's. Blend with that. Yeah, so. Good stuff, yeah. Okay, I undo it and this. Okay. So, good enough, so we can move it down. And scale it up. Say move down. You know, because we are losing that. Amount. And doesn't matter that it's far away, it's okay, anyway like we can, uh, it's sometime made in cards also in some places. So we don't need to worry that much about it, how it is. Okay, like these things should definitely be calmed down, I wanted to make a lake here, so if we can still. Would nice but not want to touch the landscape because. Can make things crazy. But definitely. Much better. Yeah, we can. Basically the camera angle matters. And or if we. Feel something is odd, we can. Play with it. Okay, so let's not play too much. But the one thing I wanted to try was PCG, I don't know if uh. If that will work, it was something similar to. Oh, I have tried it once or twice already. But just similar to what we have in, in our. Uh, Blender, like geometry nodes, so it's basically you have points, you take starting mesh and you instance on points basically. It's the basic fundamental and what you can do there is you can. You know, uh, in that we can take. Anything, basically we can take uh. Starting meshes, we can take landscape, we can uh, say source anything. So for example, uh, for this water, it is good enough is there, where you have the simulation setting. So shall only have this. And for some reason it's not working in there, but I have downloaded five point six. Simulation is working there, so maybe I will try converting this project to five point six. And I will see if the simulation for the water works or not. Because that will give us with really natural form, like if the water falling and doing basically. Interacting with the rocks and everything. That was one and another uh, plan thing was I wanted to make a grave graveyard here. Around here, maybe the small one, yeah, that's why I kept it clear. On the view because the church there should be. And also plan to, you know, increase the distance of grass from much further. So we, if we look, the grass is not here, we can. Yeah, and yeah, so that's basically a few things which I want to try. Okay, sure this is cool. Yeah, let's see chats. Ashra, hello, this is Anhar Ashra, how are you? Uh, does the material blending comes from? The Gaia or was it unique shader inside Unreal using height map? This was already in there, so we did not update, so let's go in and check. So basically to have the. Those masks already, but that was according to the last one, it do not have auto angle blend. I think that would have been really nice, like we have uh, auto slope shader and stuff. It can brighten up, okay. We have automatically slope, so you take the slope and it works basically in the landscape, if you see here. So it, it can take account the slope, so wherever you have the slope, it adds the different material. But I don't think it is working on this static mesh. If it is wonderful, but I don't know, I did not check the shader of it, this is the shader. So let me. Open it up, this is how it looks right now. Yeah, and it already has some textures in there, which you will check. And here's the textures, and you see here, landscape mask, so if I open it up, this is how it is. Uh. So red seems to be flow map. This also seem, this seems to be the slopes. This is also like seems like flow map but more detailed. This is height map. Yeah, so height and then there is uh. Something, whatever this is flow map, seems like more flow map. And this one is slope. Definitely, we like slope uh, but in opposite like the ground maybe. Other than the rivers. And these are, this is the other material, I think for the river and crevices. Yeah, so this is basically what I was trying to make in here. So RGB mix, so I think we can. See it somehow, I think we were able to. Um. Hmm, lock preview, does it? Hmm, lock preview, does it work? On this, I was able to, I don't know, like I am guys new to uh. It's new to me, uh I don't know hundred percent how things work in here. But we can, the render is on. And. Mask. But there is something really new I learned, so whenever you have this, you can have a mask here. Yeah, you can have a. Clamp or different masks, this is you can create. History point, this is, I didn't know you can create a mask on different systems, it is fun. So it is basically, I don't know how to visualize it, last time I was doing it, it was working. Uh sportless. Uh it's flow. Okay. Look at that. It should not be how it it should be, but you see, you can see the flow. But it's taking it as a height, so this is not a height. Hmm, how to tell it is not a height, it is just an. JPG and. Yeah, I don't know how to tell that, but this is flow and let's see. This is the way, I think that one was the weird one could be, this is cool like how the wear and tear happen. And let's see, this positions, different one is good. Height is definitely, this is height, um basically in the gen- in general. And if we want to make the other masks, I think we can from uh. Let's see if we can modify, so uh where is. Yes, this is new to me, simply just we can try it out if we have. Should be there, it should be something for the selecting the slope basically. So you can select and you can mask it out and then you can export it at RGB merge basically we have. So you put RGB and this out it in there. Or you can use any other tool if you can export them separately, uh like this we have here. And height and this is measure and this we can export and, you know, change the mask and it should work. In our, which I haven't done, maybe I will do. Afterwards. But like finally it's working, like I don't know, the the last two time it was not working, uh exporting it. So this is good. Uh I believe this uh is good time to have more details in there, which I was feeling like, okay. It will have pebbles and debris in here. And some small, and you can see that all the flowers and everything is gone because. All the master material have the same texture, which I am lacking because there are not in a too many. Details in our. Concept, where did the P O F go? Yeah, yeah. So wanted to go something like this, like if you are following this as our. Master, and you see this have simple grass, but like very vibrant. Okay, with rocks with the moss, so that we can do, we can update the rocks. And other than that. Sometimes this, basically not too much variation in there, so I need that gritty feeling like here, so so some rock. And the cliff, definitely, we don't have any cliff. Because these rocks gonna act as cliff as well, so we need this cliff rocks basically. Otherwise, it looks so empty like rocks and cliffs, that's what we are missing in our. Now we had previously placed a bunch of rocks and cliffs in here and there. Let's see if we have in our foliage, we still have them. Yeah, we have the debris, so just for now. Turn it off, let's see if we can do it. And also last time, I don't know if if the stream wasn't there, so I will show you. A tool which I was again not able to. You know, use properly, so. Rock testing out, the debris is is is. Really, it's four time, but it's not acting. So let's try how it looks. Well, actually like we have Zed. I think Z offset, yeah. So let's make it. Yeah, now it will. Pop up. Here and there, we we just don't need that, this one, we need a tiny one also like as grass type. Like we have this debris and everything. And also like they had shown in the Captain America or Avenger game, the displacement. I think gonna add a lot of interest if we do, there is some repetition, but if we can make some tire marks. And that is again is uh not that difficult. Uh we can do with PCG or we can do it with the landscape uh spline as well. If you feel something is not really good. You can, you know, move it around and fix it. You will see like it suddenly add some interest in there. And we can make the staller grass in there around the formation. So it helps us, and also this was was bugging me before also. Move. Okay, so yes, that was is there, so I believe the rock is definitely, I need to find. But I sometimes I can make some rocks, sculld. Uh we can do it uh in the session also, so in one session maybe we will do the rock. And but I will first, I have to try a bunch of things, I need to try. Uh this, um if river can work, we can automatically get this floor done. And the tool was called. It's physics painter, something like that, uh. It basically I had. So many taps. It's a. So it is called. Give me a second, I will find you. I saw it on the William Rogers channel, so you can go check it out as well. It was called physics, physical layout, yeah. Physical layout, yeah, so here. This one. Let it open. This one. Okay, so basically you can place bunch of things on top and everything, right? And on. And this uh on Williams Rogers channel is really. Awesome, so he simulated all these, but for some reason. I'm not able to, because Fab. So. Start setting stuff. And you select and make plane and it's talking about the collision, you need to have collision, everything need to have collision. Which is pretty easy in Unreal, you can make it with single click. And then you give it and then you just start dropping things. And I would uh tested it. Yeah, so if this can, you know, save it as foliage. So if I can send all these, uh these are instance mesh, uh. Go have the, and then if I can send them as foliage actors. It's like having, you know, larger and smaller on C, like it this thing. So this is what we need on our riverbed. This is important, uh because uh, you know, look at us. We need it, okay, and. And I might cheat a bit in here with Sketchfab, which I recommend you also. Uh I know there is uh stones or pebbles basically, uh which are downloadable. By the team of. Salty, so if you have a personal project, you can use it, you're not gonna resell it. So you can use it and. Stones is not there, that's just pebbles. Hmm, like even if you find with it like this, let's try it rocks. Hmm, like this one like stylized rocket does, but you can change the scale of it. And we have already did the texture like you can change like this one, yeah, this local rock pack by this. This is the one. Yeah, right, like a bunch of different colors, low poly and does not hurt us, but it's good enough. Yeah, we can make them different scale, okay, this one. Yeah, so yeah, so this one is downloadable, take it and we can, you know, simulate it inside using this tool. But only thing is like if we can save as foliage. And other thing I also did at one point utilize these low poly. Acts, okay, so this is locally it's downloadable, but you get this different scale of rocks. Which you can detail for sure. As per your taste, but what you get is a pack like for example, if I show you here, this one. Okay, so now you have these cliffs here, no, so this is a really tall cliffs. And there are a bunch of rocks, different shapes. Here also, you have different cliff and rock, this is, this is uh your base. So you can sculpt, take this, decimate it, uh remesh it. And start sculpting based on things, so you can keep the formation or make your own. And I love these low poly shapes of cities, right? So there are a bunch of shapes here, right, these shapes, so you can use them as a basic shape, here your cliff. So if you need cliff, it's all three D, right? And take it, you can even make two or one and just rotate in a place and see if we can. Yeah, or you can find set from it and do it. Yeah, so yeah, it's procedural, stylized, let's see what it is. It's a rabbit hole I love to go, uh or this one. So the set, you need to use the exact, use them as a placeholder and then, you know. Yeah, look at this. Beautiful. Hmm. Nice. Definitely you can use utilize the Houdini geometry nodes or. Even you can sculpt inside, I think, uh make the basic shape inside Unreal. And then utilize it, and if you feel like, oh yeah, this is good, you can take it out and export and sculpt. This is like these scans that you will find a lot of scans like this. Yeah, which can help you also sculpt basically. Right, how it is, it's good. So this is what I wanted to do, show you basically. So there are these low poly ones which you can use as a placeholder and there are these. Pebbles and rock pack by this guy, and there are like way more, you can go this rabbit hole and find. There are so many scanned rock you will find, if you feel like oh it is good. But there was one particular thing, if you give me a moment, I will show you, I was saving it from. Long time, if I still have it open. I have it, uh I found some riverbeds basically. So I think it's not here anymore. Too many taps. Hmm, okay, so let's try finding river if I find. There was something like that, like riverbed was there. And there was the scan of stream was there, which was really good like this. That's downloadable also, a river rocky scan, so see, this could act as our texture for this, we will look at the detail. Even if I don't want to, I can use this and you know, put it on a spline. Make a tileable mesh, maybe I put it on spline and send it on the. Uh if I place it on the surface multiple time, gonna add a lot of details. In that I can show you by downloading it and uh placing it, I can see. Like give uh just give me another uh idea of like how the rock is placed and how detailed this is. But you will find other one, there is this, not this one, but there was like definitely a bridge was, but you see. How the placement of the rock is around the stream and definitely ours is a stream, not a big river. And yeah, so that's what I wanted, there was one with the bridge and this is cool too. I think this is the one I, because I liked it as well. Yeah, so this is one and let's see this one. Look at this, yeah, so like I was talking about like putting waterfall in there, but you see the two, if you want to see the placement of the things. See how it is and you get the idea of uh. Like how the rock will be, it's like, oh, this is the cliff, okay, I need some cliff stuff. And some rock size and how big it is, and see there is dry and wet stuff. So all the stuff we can uh basically see and how it flows like this, this. Home and everything we need, wherever the rock is, there will be form. And if we uh five one, five point six had all of that, you see. Similar stuff, like if we can achieve something similar, it's really tricky, I don't know. But I want something similar to this, but not this wide, but see we have only two, three. Right, but something in this big only, so the rock on this side, rock on this side, something here like this. Both side. Yeah, cool, so this is good, let me see if someone have a question. Uh what is the plan for the road detail? Road detail, I did not think too much, but I had something here. If I show you, uh there was someone who made, it was art rough, yeah, this one. Right, it's a bit stylized, but it was good enough, like see the road, uh it's a paint on over paint in here. Maybe it's a paint over three D because it looked like paint. Job, like see the brush strokes, but this was the idea, like to make this much detail, you see there are like some flowers, some cliff on this side and some cliff here. And then the stream is flowing underneath it, so this was the idea of uh. Uh I like this detail and there was another one which I recently saw on Art Station, I don't know if I bring it here. I can see it on my art session, it will be there. Uh it was definitely not, it was ocean, I believe. So I can, my collections. I think I can see in my likes, it will definitely be, yeah, this one. So the both are good. This one, see. So the the bridge and then the how the riverside is, this. Right, rock and everything, it's shown, it's shown the workflow also, which is good. Rocks, how it is, you know, sculpted, and this is the. Like good stuff. I know, I need like, I need time to, if I want to put all the details and everything, I need some time to go over it. But it's definitely it's good. This guy loves sculpting. And this one was good also, you say, but it's ocean, both of them were ocean, so that is not there. But there are multiple way to add the details, but let's see, these are all good references. For our, nice, so see there have wooden planks and everything. Wooden plank going there, but in our there is nothing, so I will stick to our. This. Here, see, there are like slabs, there are stones, but there is nothing. But we can use that also, if we want to make it more sturdy, we can make some rocks, stuff surface like this. Two rocks maybe like this or. Some slabs. Simple this uh type of slabs and we can just place them around. We can test out, like it's not a concrete, like even if you see here, they they have the concrete basically, this is not working well. Make, but you see here, uh some dirt road, we need these. Carry or uh small pebbles and everything in there and if possible, uh if you don't use the. Rock all over the place, but some uneven, I'm not sharing, okay, so here's some carry in here. And and like this road, like this here, so this something like that, okay. Just dirt road, nothing, nothing much too fancy, the uh the maximum we can do, we can make that uh muddy path. Maybe like this is uh like here, you have, let's say some rocks in the path and some dirt to add the detail. That's what I want, I'm going for, we can have these slabs in there, like we can have few more. And we can just place them around to give the path more sturdiness, but you see here, this mostly what I'm going for. Let's see too much, let's see, let's see, there are some rocks and everything and then dirt and some. Like if someone rolls something in the murder walk, you will get this muddy road, stuff like that, that. So maybe I should put, don't hesitate and put the time, I need to put time, there is this, everything sculpting, everything and making this detail. And need time, and you know that the people go nuts over these sort of things, but again, the time, uh I know I have also, let's see, this is. Uh good. But you know, amount of like this square one could be used as cliff. This one also cliff, this can be used for and the boulder, and these are the rock formations and these are debris. To make the cluster basically and then the someone, you do cover, these are too many. How those leaves or rocks are constructed. But you can uh have a few and you can roll them around, like I've shown here as uh, it like these could be those tiny ones. Pebbles, this could be the set, like if you are confused, like what type of thing you need, you can start with this set, okay, so there are large one cliff. Okay, boulder, you can have another one, okay, and then rock set. And then uh the only thing is missing is uh debris, uh right, so if you take this as an example, you see. So some boulders and some with some smaller clusters which can, we have made the debris procedurally also. Last time, but you see, we need to have that for composition, uh for everything, if we see, let's look at the. Hmm, axels, okay, so we will find images here, um for rocks. Let's see, if we find. We will see like the large one and the small one around it and not the. If you find something good one, this is good, the cliff, large rocks, some rocks. And debris you don't have here, but the overall, this is the set basically we need to, you know. Hmm complete the composition. Right, so some large one, a small one mixed up, this will, this will, this is what I need, that's why I was you, wanted to use physical layout. Maybe we can simulate it in Blender or any other and just place it in there, that will be fine too. But depends on you, like how much you want to, time you want to spend on it, uh but whoa. That's the only set we need to come create, maybe we can do it in the next session, we can just create that set, a rock set. Yeah, and we continue set dressing because I placed it uh previously. And then uh when I changed the landscape because I was having trouble, uh it's all gone. So maybe we can make cliff rocks and everything uh next time and start placing. And yeah, we'll have fun uh in there, I know this is still pending, we added detail in there, we need to improve all the detail on all the other parts. Okay, like we added, uh yeah, so that will be our next part, so uh. There is a lot of work on my part because I need to and a bridge I believe is gonna be simple, I know I don't want to uh. Copy the things from others, I don't know if good for have any bridgy stuff, but you see the rock and cliff. Love it like this, use all that stuff, a lady stuff. Maybe we can try me here, it's been a while, I have made rock also, so we can have fun. Uh but with the uh with this thing, I believe it's gonna be much simple because there are like one texture is for this, one texture for this. And will be fine, same as you see, it's like a styable brick wall basically, one and this is another one. Um and the path we can do the same, the only thing I was worrying about because it was uh. To uh. You know, turning so quickly and it's not actually very small bridge also, so we need to take care of. The detail, I was thinking that we can, you know, maybe make it. Either make it diagonal or either make the road a bit more curvy because this. This will be difficult to get up and I was also planning to make it long. Yeah, so this was the plan, we can just know directly. We can make it longer basically in the end. Yeah, so yeah, so this was uh here. Now, uh so now the the path, now just look at in the camera how it is. So now this path will go here directly and if I. Play, I'll show you the, but the bridge, how much details it have, it does not show, I remember it is big. Uh so the texture did and everything is comparatively really huge compared to the texture size it have. But it does not blend well, so we need to fix that and you know the side does not. Bug me that man unless you go close, but we need to, right, we cannot leave the sloppy job here. Right, so see the rock, beautiful rock here. And yeah, so this is good, I will try to do a morning stream also, uh because I wanted to. Maybe I'll do some other stuff, but I want to really finish things up hmm here and do bunch of stuff. You know, so and I will try first, let go, then we have pebbles, oh, there is a rock. We have rock material, so we can use this. But we have a rock clear, so that's why these pebbles and everything are popping up there, that means we have pebbles also in the mesh. We just need to control it, they're like all over the place, we can use that with physical painter and I'm trying to open it in my uh. In my. Uh in my fab or in my Unreal launcher, it's not showing up. Look at that, trees growing in the water and in our procedural thing, oh, I'm walking on the water, nice. I think you can uh interact, we just need to add in there, we can interact with the things also with the waters. But again, it's not working here uh for some reason. So we can see, and I was also planning that we can may turn that into a cliff, that big one. The other one we have made is have detail and this one not. And I will try taking it to Gaia and re-importing it. And I saw a video basically on the internet, uh on YouTube maybe, whatever you want to call it. Uh good, thank you so, wait what? Why it's crying? So in here we have made it twenty five scale, like you saw in here, we have climbed it, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna export it again. Clamp it to twenty five percent, bring it back, so we don't have to scale the landscape. That was the trouble we were having when we was, you know, sculpting it on the till a height, it was not going beyond that. Because that is the problem, like if I show you the problem, uh if you were not there, uh these are like all the problems we have. All the times, like if I um scroll. It don't go beyond that. It's because we have come, uh you know, scaled it twenty five percent, so it could logically can go way way more higher. Right, but it's limited for some reason. So yeah, we don't need to, but I wanted to make a lake there. I wanted to make a lake in there, right? So we can have a lake uh water body, which is again is a water tools uh from epic, which is good. So we can have a lake, so from church, we can, at the distance we can see lake, yeah. Again, I won't carry forward with the too many ideas, I'll just stick to finishing what we have for now. The close up matters more, we need rocks, we need small details like debris, uh decals. Uh decals could be mesh or it could be splines in here, uh hmm, if I show you another thing, if I search. Something like that, so then you have a tracks and stuff like that, we can add inside. Yeah, so that's this one's good, right, so when you will have variation like that on the road. I'm gonna shine like this, see the the, when this pass by, you give this, look at this. So what are some variation, even if you don't put puddles. But some uh you know, the debris, this is tiny debris in the corner, in here, the grass and some clusters. In the corner that makes the path more clear, like you see, like it's people gonna keep going, stuff like that. So to make it, yeah, this one is good, see, something like that, so this will like with the leaves, like of course we have trees around. Uh all the fallen leaves will be there and some details, some tiny puddles because there is a water body nearby and if you could bring the water there. And there are not, definitely not that many tire marks, but you see the details and how the corners are. Uh so that's what we need to make, maybe this will have on the other side, this could be the flip, flip version of this secretly. Yeah, so where we have more. Good references, right, so this make it clearly path, right, it will look like a path, uh so that's what we need to make. Again, these are like our aspirations, but when we really go in here, it takes time to make. And the most easy and straightforward way is using landscape supplies. Uh what you can do, you can have uh I think uh have spline, okay. So what you can say, okay, I want to add a spline which goes. Um to hmm, it's not layers, but why is. Is. Spines and. You control click. Is it? This, oh, I press G, that's my mistake, delete, I have too many now. So you add a spline, control click and alt click and drag to have a path. It should uh snap to the ground. And it, I love how it automatically does, I see there is some rock information which is good for us. Now we know that this, we have already done it uh previously, but we did not maintain it. But you know, you have this path, okay, and you can control it, you can say, okay, control point, so you can collect all of them. One of them and you can say, okay, who's worth. Five hundred is centimeter right, which is good enough, five meters. And so. Again, if we want to change bunch of them, you can, I don't know if you have uh filters, but you see there is mesh. Uh I guess quickly show you how to do that, maybe we will use this workflow. Uh but control points and the perform one side follow. Yeah, and. Okay, so if you want to make this, edit the terrain, you can terrain, you can do it, okay, impact the terrain. Or you can use them independently and now hmm now our favorite uh. Rock catalog and textures haven't. Okay, uh I will some path, let's see if we have. Hmm always such mud, I think there is something like mud. Will be there, oh, nice, yeah, here, okay, aerial mod. Hmm, let's check this one. Let's travel the road. And this try and muddy. It's good, yeah, side path. What is on second, it's not needed and. This is good, again, rocky trail. We can use these textures on uh in our Unreal, this is good, okay. You see, this path is the, as rocky path again, you can mix and match with this. Okay, for now we'll take this one, this is two K or four K or eight K whichever one, now to eight K, it doesn't matter. And we displacement, we take PNG. We have diffuse, we have normal track tags and packed definitely. Okay, let it download, I'll show you how you can make it. I'll save it. Hmm, church. Land mount and I will save it in mount one A. Uh let me quickly, the monster is dominant, if anyone have question, uh okay, yeah, we are already on. Same thing, okay, so let uh continue with this. Okay. Hmm, where is? The download. To so much stuff, uh downloads. And. Is it awesome or? Oh, this is from the textures aerial mod. Textures. Okay, so in our blender file. This is the one, I will make a new. And we have our same texture, so create a plane. And we can see on the, this, how big is it? It is eight meter wide, ooh, nice. Eight K eight meter, so we can do, is it long, is it really eight meter? Um it seems like it's really big, so. We make a new plane and we call, we make it. Eight meter. Place queue. And we. Simple. Six is maximum. Shade smooth and let's add the displays. The decimate, displays. Okay, new and texture again, this is the same thing we have done millions of times already. And let me copy the path. And we have displacement here. And voila, we have muddy road. And we just need. Another subdivision, but before displacement. Okay, honestly, we don't need to keep all of it. And technically not the. Somehow seems like same, things repeating again and again. Like this, not helpful that much. Compared to the last size. Even that is large. Okay, what I can do, uh road, aerial, aerial. There it is, man, uh dirt. Road aerial. Hmm texture. That's fine, yeah, this is, there is, hmm. And. This is good, but it's tiny. And if you, this this one is good, oh actually hmm, but this one texture website, which is good. Nice, so we have a bunch of images here on this one. Which is good, like for example, this one with the dirt leaves and gravel, all this one is good. These three of them are all good. Which one should we pick, I will try this one. Okay. Oh, let's try, that's one or two of them, it's up. Ah only two, hmm unfortunate, it's okay. Just. Downloads and. So here is the path, so we can make a long one from it by combining these two. Okay, even though it's one, so this one seems uh can work a lot more. Hmm. Should we hmm first. Width could be. Two zero four eight, height could be one zero two four. Hmm hmm. So. Width is two. Is three, two, six, four and height we can do the half of it is. One, six. Thirty, let's see. Okay, yeah, that's good. Save it there. Uh it's a rectangle. And we can do bit material, we get the height and stuff also, we can use uh some of the own at all as well. If you uh having in there, this one, I I liked it, but it's meh. Hmm okay, let's take another plane with scale X two. And shooting. Yeah. Yeah, so. We got the. No, the same dirt path basically in here. Now it's uh if if you want to use the full version, we can do that as well, no issue. Okay, so imagine we want to take the whole whole thing with the leaves and grass and everything. Okay, I will do that, so for that, what I will do, I will take. The dimension from it, uh three to six point four. Two four four point eight, it's like the resolution it have and delete this one. Uh take. Ancient put it there, okay, so now we got the whole thing, now the the matter of fact is uh we just, you know. No, model this. Slightly. This one, just. Yeah, so now it's just have this shape, now let's do. Select this one, I was a link, uh copy modifiers. It'll take some time, because. That one is crazy. Should have reduced the subdivision first. We already add subdivision, so it's crying. Okay, my mistake. Okay. Uh first, I will just. Just cry. So it's much lesser now. So I can do it or. Now, this is basically, they give you once, okay, now I just want it in the center, you can, whatever you can do here. Let's try putting the same image as displacement. Very noisy, so what we can do. Reduce it and try. Bumping up the thing. So that's why it's smooth, yeah, got some some variation at least. The only thing is, uh you just make uh either this flat or. You know, make. A scale, a scale X zero, this like flat because. You have some insulation, we can reduce it, we can say point one. Okay, same to shift the. And we can, you know. Use the texture and the same and have some. Noise, okay, that, so we have. Come in there and then we use the same texture, when we use the same texture, it's gonna work up, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna select it. Move to bottom or just I'm gonna move. Up. A bit, so this, the pivot gonna be the ground plane in there. To cursor, okay, so now we have this thing and let's try this out and we know we have a church. Hmm land and road. Dirt, this is the same thing you can do with the river also, like if you have that, you can use the tileable mesh basically. My selected meshes, okay, and export. And let me show you how you can import it simply. Here we have our. Hmm. And this uh. Landscape. Parts. Then I will import it here. And then. Let's do one thing. We fire up substance designer. And we make the map quickly and you can download the old bitmap to material. Also. Hmm. Here substance designer, I'm gonna take this. I'm gonna squish it. Sure. It's totally fine. Bitmap to material. You get this and you want. Yeah, normal map. You can basically. So bond all the stuff. And you can hide also, then this hide you can use there as well. Okay, so the only thing is uh it's not exactly. The texture, like we don't four K and four K, but we is. This uh leather I will make it like this, but it's too long, it's again not. The first is important to make it square, yeah, before bringing it to substance designer. Yes, for now, I will just leave it like this, okay. So we have, I will just save it as uh. Give me. Here. Dirt. Food. Dirt, one A, I will be do. Yeah. And height is important. We will try it on the mesh again, if we can. And then we can say R G B A merge. Take a uniform color. For. Alpha. Now. We can make it H R A, like height, if we can utilize it, because there's no metallic in there and it's not necessary, so we can say edge. Or. Uh roughness is like this, glossiness seems much better, let's go with. Roughness and you. Then we can. H R A, yeah. So we have it here, let's get back to this and let's try. This one. Why it got this when I put it there, then put in the wrong. Alright, so this is good. Yeah, so this is good enough. And see how it is. Yeah, so yeah, so this is good and now we'll again export it again, and now we have it. Good. And. Should have exported it there only. So we got the mesh, okay, so just to, so we can just put the mesh in here for now. Okay, go away. And. You see. It is tiling basically and do we, can we fit? Fit uh in there, no. It's here, it's not working exactly as expected, it's going, it should fit. Basically bend according to this line as much as I remember. Meshes there. Hmm hmm. It should be basically. We have enough segments, so that's not a worry. But technically, it should be going, repeating in there. Not just point and mesh, maybe we need to change something in there. And. Remove it and I will select the segments, okay, segments and now try, let's find if we have. Line meshes there, let's use line meshes, let's add one. And add that mesh, okay, so now we have something going. Yeah, this is not aligning, because that's what I said, like if it don't align, then it not, it will give us. Issue, but it's not for us, so now. I can simply come to the points and. Slightly shove them in the ground. You. Coach. Yes, and it's, you are up to you how much, how deep you want to take it. Yeah, so you can take it that much also, like it's going underground. And now this is. Basically having terrain issue, so that is again fine. Now, this looks good, okay, so we got our path, now. Let's make material for it. We will have texture and in materials. In master, uh we have bridge, bridge will also not have tileable, but. Let's take this one. My mistake. Uh because before it was like control W duplicate and this is control D, so. Um. M M. Usually rock should also having this. Usually everything should have it. And now from here, we go back. Where did I kept it? So. So it's H R A. And you can in uh you can have, uh because metallic we don't need. So it's edge height, we can world position offset, we can do it and we can say. One is uh. One is, uh, convert to parameter. Displays amount. And multiply it with. This. So M R A. And roughness and this goes. Nowhere metallic zero code base color and then lastly. Normal map. And this one thing we need to make sure this one is. Say it, take it as normal map, it is not a normal map, it's masks. Okay, because this gives error, because convert the based on that. So we make sure. And it is masks here, so we don't have any trouble. Save it. Now we create, hmm, instance. Create. Where is? M M. What M M? M I path. Dirt, I think it was the wrong dirt. Where? There we go, here. Over here. Now. And what? You change the texture in wrong one or what? I hope. We didn't do anything. Yeah, we, I think. Uh, we did changes in the wrong material. This is structure, a rough and metallic is there, it's good. And we have. We have. Down zero. Roughness or more, we have a value, zero in there. Okay, maybe we did not save it, yeah, now it is there. Yeah, yeah, we can control, good. Now you see, we have. Our path. Okay, it's, I think, uh, not, but it's repeating basically. And I can come back to selection. I think we, uh. It's automatically taking the collision, so which is good. Yeah. Nice, right, this we need to match. We don't have a choice. But to match, but we can match it easily by doing one thing. Select these, what this is. And. It's not a good workaround. Because we can simply select these, what this is. And assign. Remove, okay. Or maybe we should have assigned and here remove. And when you come here and you can select the group. You see, whatever, uh, everything else is affected, but not these, what this is. So what we can do. And we can see what is happening. And to, and just to make sure they align, you just select and, you know, scale them. Now let's try, I think it will be much better than before. When it reimported. Did it import? Then you should check if it is done correctly, but this is, basically you can add, draw it. For now, I feel it is too big. Would like to make it smaller. And spine, you can click here, it will come, it's like segments. Or control points, you see. Play on. Or. And the, the, these textures we can take from the ground. And we can assign the same in printer or maybe we can assign them here as well, like multiple materials. So we can tileable textures basically. The dirt is one and then other is. And let's go to camera angle. Right, see, the path already looking much better and as, and saying like when we will have. Uh, cliffs and rocks and pebbles and the breeze, kind of this tree looks odd to me. I'm gonna remove these ones, not keep small bushes, okay, it keeps a tree for that. And when you're gonna fill the rock, it's gonna look much better, I'm gonna make it more contrasty, gonna align it. See, another thing on top, uh, with this, but yeah, this was, uh. Really good. Thing, so I hope, uh, this was fun, so I will see you in the next one. Bye.